I now call the council meeting to order. If all they are able to and like to, please rise for the invocation led by Mr. Blake Kirk, followed by the pledge allegiance led by Councilman Will Culver.
Let us pray. O gentle goddess and loving God, we thank you for the beauties and the wonders of the day that you have given to us, and for the opportunity we have this evening to assemble here and work together to make Huntsville a better city for all of its residents. We ask that you grant to the councilors and other officials' presence here tonight the wisdom they will need to make the best decisions that they may for the governance of our city. And further, we ask that you visit upon these chambers a spirit of peace and comity, so that all who need to speak before the council this evening may do so in an atmosphere of courtesy and respect without needless anger or hostility. These things we ask of you as children would of their loving parents, trusting that you will give unto us those gifts we truly need. Amen.
Please place the pledge. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Kirk. Thank you, Mr. Culver. The minutes from the October 23rd, 2014, meeting have been received and they'll stand approved. There's no objections. The minutes from the organization meeting held November 3rd, 2014, and also the special session held November 3rd, 2014 have been received and they'll stand approved if there's no objections. We now, our resolution is special recognitions. Mayor Battle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Joy McKee to come up. She has a special project that's being done, and it's recyclable, sustainable, a whole lot of other things here.
Yes, sir. We're so excited about this, Mayor. And one of the things I want to make sure that everybody realizes, in our nation, a hundred billion plastic shopping bags each year that use 12 million barrels of oil are produced and thrown away much of the time. So, as Operation Green Team Director, I'm proud to say we've found another use. And that use is going to be something that's great for our homeless community. These are mats. And this is made totally out of plastic bags. And I'm going to have, oh, mine's not pretty, and I didn't make it because I'm not talented enough to crochet. But what we're doing is we're challenging the community. And we've already, Mayor, gotten some recruits while we're out here in the audience, maybe even our own sissy, Kate's, to actually make some of these. And we're going to distribute these to the homeless advocate groups, and they're going to take care of this for us. But this is the way to reuse plastic bags. It takes around 500 plastic bags. People have been bringing us bags for literally the last year, so we're ready to share with anyone. And if you don't have your own bags, we'll give you your own bags. And then, we have tutorials that you can watch. We also have a great teacher. This is Mrs. Karen Volker. And Karen is going to just do a real quick demonstration. Kay Tidwell did our first one, and she works at the Greenery, and she was very proud to do it. So you can see, they can be white. These bags actually came from Halsey. So that's why they're all white, and they had a "thank you" on the front, and that's how it came out. So, we're going to let Karen say just a word, but we're so excited and we're begging the community to please. We want to make 500 of these for those people who are out there, and this will be a barrier for them. They won't be right on the ground. This will be insulation. This is one of the coolest things we can do, and if you know how to crochet, contact Operation Green Team at (532) 5326. We'll get you set up with the bags. Karen?
Now, Joy, could you sit here and be at council meeting and crochet as you listen to council? And do those? We could produce lots of those, couldn't we?
We could, Mayor, and we want 500. Remember that number. So, you know, and council members, if y'all want me to get you a needle and some plastic bags, I'll do that as well.
To prepare for this, all you do is take one plast-- let me get my plastic.
Okay.
You take your plastic bag, okay? Normally, you would ball it up and throw it in the basket or something, or maybe put it someplace to recycle it someday. But you just take your bag and flatten it out, fold it in half, and then fold it in half again, and cut off the tail end and cut off the handle. Then you take what you have, fold it in half, cut it with a scissors once, fold it again, and cut it with the scissors a second time. So you end up with four loops, four plastic loops that you tie together into a string. Then you take your big crochet hook, and you make something that's about three feet across, and mine is a little over six feet long. Now, this is a little more colorful, but it's got a lot of love in it. And this is very fluffy, so when you're lying on the ground, you have some insulation and you have some padding, and so it just makes life better. And then you roll it up and put the string around it and schlepp it over your shoulder. There you go. Now, mine took about 700 bags. Yeah.
Mine's smaller, so it's a 500.
This is made for bigger, taller people, and this is made for skinny people right there, very, very skinny people. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Under announcements, 15Z and 15AA have been deleted from the agenda, 15Z and 15AA. And I'd also like to welcome our newest member, Dr. Jenny Robinson. Welcome to your first formal meeting. Glad to have you. We have no business with outside legal representation. We have no public hearings to be held. We do have public hearings to be set. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance amending the approval development plan, approved development plan for Providence Plan Development, LUI rating 56, to add to the permitted uses in various transsects. This will be set December 18th, 2014, at the regular council meeting.
So moved?
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying west of US Highway 231 South and north of Green Cove Road from Light Industry District to Residence 2B District, and from Residence 1B District, Residence 2B District. This will be set December 18th, 2014, at the regular council meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the north side of Old Highway 431 and west of Mill Run Road from Residence 1A District to Neighborhood Business C1 District. This will be set for the December 18th, 2014, regular council meeting.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Four is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the south side of US Highway 72 and on the east side of Morris Mill Road from Neighborhood Business C1 District to Highway Business C4 District. This will be set for the December 18th, 2014, regular council meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Culver, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying on the east and west sides of Morrisville Road and on the north side of Huntsville's Brown Ferry Road to Highway Business C4 District. This will be set for the December 18th, 2014, regular council meeting.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying on the south side of Parsons Road and east of Hobbs Island Road to Residence 1 District.
Moved to approve?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Robinson, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor setting the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at communications from the public. When I call your name, please go to the microphone and give your name and address for the record, and you may talk to the council for three minutes on any subject you'd like to. Dr. Clarence Johnson.
Council President, I'm a forego at this time.
Thank you. Pastor TC Johnson.
Good evening. TC Johnson, 1800 Sparkman Drive. Hello, Dr. Robinson, for the first time. I had asked the city attorney about Huntsville Utilities over the years, and I finally went to the law. That's what he told me to do, and discovered that the board that we appoint is solely responsible for running Huntsville Utilities, and they delegate their authority to the CEO, who is now, of course, Mr. Jay Stowe. I'd asked for information from February this year, and later on in August, go ask, and again, I got that information, most of it. I'd asked the same thing I asked of them, I asked of the city. Mr. Stowe refuses to give me the individual zip code based upon whatever, and the education level. Now, they say they don't have that compiled yet, and I'm going to have to believe that. However, it's hard to understand how a company can employ by educational level, promote by educational level, and use that for qualification for the job and not have that information available, because their allegation that their people require certain standards for employment as opposed to others. That's just unapparat-- that's just one thing. So, the question I want to know is, if I can't get the information directly from the board, can I request that through my council and to get that particular information? That's one thing. The other thing is, while I was looking at that and trying to get that, I discovered that Mr. Pippin had fired some people, and he fired them based on scrapping metal, which has been going on in the company over as long as they knew it. Supervisors who'd come through and gone up had done the same thing. That is, they take metal, scrap metal, and go sell it at the scrapyard, and then they share the money with the team that gets that particular money. That was habit, that was the culture. Mr. Pippin fired three people at one point, another gentleman retired, and then later, when he discovered that those three were black, that their white gentleman was fired just to keep down a discrimination complaint, which, you know, is strategy. But when we look at the whole case, it's something that was culture according to a report done by Rex Reynolds, that it was culture, and the thing to do was to create the correct policies and go forward. Mr. Pippin fired those gentlemen. To show that there was something wrong, Mr. Stowe came back and hired those four gentlemen. But he hired them at end of apprenticeship level and said that it's okay to deny that some of them had worked for Huntsville Utility and had experienced for 20 years. My issue is, I would like for my council and my mayor to look into this, because from my perspective, if we're going to close the door to yesterday, no one should have been the scapegoat. In fact, one case is that one young man was fired even though his supervisor gave him the material, he sold the material, bought the money back, shared it with the team, he was fired, but the supervisor is still on the job. There's something not right. Can I have one more minute?
Council members?
There's something not right about that. It is a public utility, not a private utility, and I'm sure if I go into the many details that I have, the public won't appreciate how that was handled. And so, I'm asking at this level, because I won't stop, I'm asking at this level to seek some satisfaction in that case. We were also told that we would save money by putting the contractor and the meter people out. I'd like to know from my council and my mayor, how much money have we saved based upon the fact of paying someone else to read the meters for us? Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Johnson. We have no Huntsville Utilia items. We do have board appointments we voted on. We have a resolution appoint Susan Griffin to the Huntsville Tennis Center Board of Control, Place Number Three, for a term to expire November 28th, 2017. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Board appointment nominations. The chair nominates Susan "Jay" Phelan for reappointment of the Huntsville Ice Skating Board of Control for a term to expire 11/20/2016. Are there any other nominations?
Yes.
Dr. showers?
Let me find it here. Mr. President, let me come back. I've got it here, but I can't find it right now.
Okay. We'll move on to 10 approval expenditures. 10A is a resolution authority expenditure for payment. Mr. Kling?
Mr. President, we'd like to move for a payment of vouchers in the amount of $10,505.16.
Motion by Mr. Kling, seconded by Mr. Culver. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Under Finance Committee report, we have two resolutions. The first is a resolution approving travel for Councilman Richard Shauer, Sr., to attend the National League of Cities, an exposition to be held in Austin, Texas, November 18th and 22nd, 2014, and also a resolution for Dr. Jenny Robinson to attend as well. We'll consolidate those two items. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at communications from the mayor. Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd first like to congratulate Joy McKee and all her crew that were out planting trees on Saturday. We planted 140 trees, is that right, at John Hunt Park? We had 10,000 trees to give away, and we might still have some of those left, so if you need a tree, come get a tree. But it was a great event to start getting people involved with John Hunt Park, and getting people to be part of the John Hunt Park renovation. And, you know, as everybody comes in and everybody pitches in, they become part of that process, and they become part of that park. So, we had some young people who dug their trees. We had one tree named Walker, one tree named Brody, one tree named Delicia, and each of those young people, 10, 15, 20 years from now, are going to be able to come and look at that tree and sit under it and picnic under it, as we do events at John Hunt Park, and it will be something that will be very, very special for the future. So, congratulations, Joy. It was cold, cold, cold out there. The wind was whipping down through the valley, and so it was cold and windy, and thank y'all for doing that. Also, we've got Veterans Day activities coming up. The parade is Tuesday. Mr. Culver just asked about riding in the fire truck, and we will be riding in the fire truck, the 1928 fire truck that the city of Huntsville has. So, please come out and see the parade. I think the parade starts at 10:30 or 11:00, and it will be on Memorial Day, I mean, on Veterans Day, on 11/11. Also, this week, we're having the Geo Energy Huntsville Summit, which starts on Wednesday, and we have some great speakers coming in. In fact, the head of the National Geospatial Agency will be in, who is one of the three-letter words that works on geospatial and ties in with the CIA and some of the other agencies, intelligence agencies to provide intelligence for the government. And also, let me say congratulations and thank you to John Malone and Abby Kay and all the crew at WRSI 96.9 Light. They have saved Christmas. We will now have a Christmas parade, and it will be the first Saturday in December, and we will have a Christmas parade in the downtown area. That Christmas parade ties into Tinsel Trail, to the ice skating rink, to Santa's Village, and to all the activities that happen at Botanical Gardens, so it will be a great, make it a great season. We had an agency who did this all-volunteer Christmas parade for years and years, Way TV, and they did a great job with it, and we appreciate all that they did. This year, they thought it was time to pass the baton, and we were very fortunate that WRSI 96.9 Light picked it up, and we will have a Christmas parade this year. And that's all I've got, Mr. President. We'll say ho, ho, ho with that.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to welcome Dr. Robinson to the city council, looking forward to working with you in this capacity. I know we've worked together indirectly in your previous capacity. Also, I want to, Mayor, thank you for calling me out, but I'm sorry, I do like riding the fire truck. I wish I could have been a fireman as well as a police officer, but anyway. But more importantly, I'm excited about the whole purpose of that parade, honoring and recognizing our veterans. You know, these men and women who made, in some cases, the ultimate sacrifice for all of these freedoms and things that we enjoy, and sometimes that we take for granted. So, my hat is off to all of you for what you have done, what you are doing, and what you're gonna do. Joy McKee, if I'm not mistaken, I believe we have an engagement this Saturday, is that right? Sherwood Park? I'm surprised. Every time I go there, I see the trees that are still surviving, the bushes and stuff that I planted some three, four years ago. So, I'm always excited and looking forward to coming out and cleaning up our communities. So, anytime there is something going on and you do a good job at that, I don't know when you get rest, but we appreciate what you're doing, and anytime there's anything going on in District Five as it relates to cleaning up, you know I'll be there. So, thank you for that. Also, I want to take this opportunity to give a shout-out to the inmate labor supervisors, as well as the inmates who volunteer to keep our roadways clean, and in some cases, Mr. Hatfield, I think they help with the ditches in terms of cleaning out the ditches. Huntsville is a beautiful city, and we want to keep it that way, and I don't know of a better way to do that than to utilize that labor that we already have, because it's an opportunity for them to actually come out of the jail cells and hit the streets and breathe the fresh air and take in some sunshine while cleaning up the roadways. So, we thank you all for that, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Recently-retired Lieutenant Colonel Vic Robert Burlingame II of the US Marine Corps of Huntsville passed away. Vic was a friend of mine with the American Legion Post 237. He was a heavily decorated Vietnam veteran. He served five tours in Vietnam. He received two Silver Stars, four Bronze Stars, five Purple Hearts, numerous other medals. Vic was the type of man that, you know, I think Hollywood tries to make movies about, and he was the real McCoy, and was a friend involved with me in the district in southwest Huntsville for numerous years. And additionally, he'd been active with the American Legion Honor Guard, and he had a great life. He loved people, people loved him, he loved motorcycling, and just someone who's greatly missed. And I know we're going to have some fun events coming up with Veterans Day, and rightfully so. We're going to be providing recognition. At the same time, I just wanted to kind of take a moment to recognize Vic for what he meant to this community and to this district, and, Mr. President, he will be greatly missed. Couple other things. Let's see, Monday night, we had a meeting with Holiday Homes Neighborhood Association, and they are going to be having their next meeting, and I know they had asked if I could get them or get contact, I guess, John, you're kind of the point man, to talk to them about the upcoming park plans for Merrimack and also for, they're also interested in Seminole too, because that's kind of across the street from them, but they were asking about those. I did tell them, although I talked to you beforehand afterward, but I did tell them that there were some studies and some things that were in the works, but they would like to ask if you could come to one of their future meetings and just give an update on that. And just like one incident, so next meeting, they're going to be having all their Christmas cookies, so that might be a good meeting to come to. Mayor, you're welcome too, but I think John is sort of the point man on the parks, and they were interested, and they'd had some contact with him already, and would like to invite him to that. And that is on the first Monday of the month. I can give you more details about that. Also, I've been contacted, Joy, and I guess this is your night, but I've been contacted by some residents along Coffee Drive and about the ditch that's between Coffee and Toftoy, and I just wanted to ask, I think you're familiar with that situation, and you're going to check, and if it's within your area of jurisdiction, we'll take care of it. If not, you'll make sure Public Works gets informed. Is that the way? For the record, Ms. McKee is rattling her head in the affirmative, so I think we have that, you know, that taken care of. But in case some of the folks out there were watching the meeting, I want to let them know that we did follow-up on that. And glad to have you up here. I think it's going to add a little classes place to have another former school board member coming up to the council, so Jenny, glad to have you up here.
Following in your footsteps, Bill.
Well, that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. showers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too am delighted to be sitting next to two ex-Guillotine members, Beer Kling and, of course, Dr. Jenny Robinson. I want to just go ahead and ask all of the Bulldog supporters that are in our city, if they will put on their calendar Saturday at 1:00 PM at the Lewis Cruise Stadium, we have a big game before us. It means if we win the game Saturday, we will be in the SWAC playoff. A&amp;M plays Alcorn State, and we are looking forward to that game, and certainly winning that game. Tomorrow night, I will be at the Earnish Knights Center at Alabama A&amp;M, Lakewood Signature Harvest banquet. I will be held there tomorrow, and I will be making a presentation on behalf of the mayor and the council members at that particular banquet. On the 14th of this month, a Fellowship of Love banquet of Bishop Johnnie Burewell. Again, I will be making a presentation on behalf of the mayor and the council members. On the 15th of this month, there will be a grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Adams Barber Shop. Again, I will be making a presentation on behalf of the mayor and the council members. Also, on the 15th, the Annual Frontset Social and Charity Club will be having its program on that particular date. Again, I will be presenting on behalf of the mayor and the council members. Is Joy McKee and Terry Hatfield here tonight? Joy McKee? Is Terry Hatfield here? I just want everybody to know, last Saturday, probably was one of the coldest Saturdays in 2014, Joy McKee and Terry Hatfield had their cruise out at the Lincoln Coria Estates Association Annual Saturday Cleanup. You would be surprised the number of people, Joy, Terry, that was out there, just as I got. I got out there at 8:00, and it was cold. As the mayor said, he was at the other side, but it was cold on the north side too. But I want to thank these two persons, Terry and Joy, for all the workers they had out, all the equipment that was on the street, and also Dee had his group that had the coffee, the hot chocolate, the doughnuts, and prizes, and all of that was there, and we had a good morning cleanup in that neighborhood, and I want to say thank you for what you do in terms of making our communities better places in which to live. Again, I want to take a few moments to say a few things to us after this evening pertaining to my interests and concern in our tolling contracts for the city of Huntsville. Before I read this, I want to say to the council, to our president, I'm going to ask that the council will hold this item for another regular session to come up at our next meeting. Let me tell you why. In the request, and I want to thank our police chief, is he here tonight? Oh, he's sitting down tonight. That's why I looked over there, and I didn't see you standing over there with the other managers and directors. I want to thank Chief Morris. He responded to the inquiry-- He responded to the inquiry that we requested. The council received those responses. And I want to say thank you for how you got all of the information almost that we asked for. However, there was one item missed. In all of our bid contracts, we asked for insurance validation and workers' compensation. I would like copies from the three contractors to show that they have insurance and to show that they have workman's compensation. And then we'll be ready to go ahead and move on this item. I'm not fighting anything about who the other bid persons are. It's just that I want this information. You got everything except that. But I would like to have that information on each one of the three bidders that they do have that information for record. I want copies for the council that we may see that all three companies do have that information as is outlined in the document. And certainly, I want to go ahead and finish reading what I prepared. As many of you know, Reliable Towing is a minority contractor located in my district and is presided over by Mr. W.D. Strong. It is the only African-American owned towing contractor in this city and happens to be the largest towing contractor in the city of Huntsville and surrounding areas. This city's record of awarding contracts to African-American businesses is dismal, to say the least. And we should be, it should be unacceptable to all of us. This city awards millions of dollars of contracts to contractors all the time. We go in our way to justify many of these contractors when we could have gone with a lower bid. But we justify it with things like experience, facilities, equipment, and other qualifications and all of that we may provide the city with quality and dependable vendors. I voted yes to all of these contracts in order to be a good steward over the city finances and provide you, the citizens, with a better quality of life. However, I would be remiss if I didn't voice my concerns over the issue pertaining to reliable towing. I've spoken with Mr. Strong at length as to how the city is treating him as a contractor. His overall assessment has been good. He stated that city employees at the Johnson Road site, specifically Johnny Gurley, Nathan Briggs, and the public transit employee Roger Garrison, that he worked very well and communicates very well with them on a daily basis. And they have always been courteous, professional, and he truly appreciates working with them. Yet, he has concern as to the requirements that were put on him. He, that was put not on the previous contract. Let me say that again. His concern has been that the requirements that he has been asked to consider and to do was not put on the previous contractors. However, he stated to me that he performed all the requirements to show the city that his company was capable to handle and contract professionalism and reliability. He felt that irregardless of how he performed, that the city would write the new specs to allow unqualified companies and companies outside the city limit to qualify to limit their ability to retain contracts at reasonable rates for performing the requirement. And it appears what happened is what he has said. As the administration and my fellow council members know, I've had many conversations with companies located outside my district who have come to me to champion their cause. And I've done that without being accused of being impartial. Although I serve all the citizens of Huntsville, I'm elected to represent the citizens of District One. And I will listen to them and fight for them to be heard and included as a part of this city. In closing, let me say that we need to be more sensitive and inclusive of African-American businesses, women-owned businesses, and other minority businesses in our contracting opportunities. I'm hopeful that the sense of just about mistrust that I have seen in some of our departments is can be replaced by a sense of optimism and trust. My sense of optimism and trust can be greatly enhanced when I began to witness sensitivity by all of the departments towards our employees and their rights. Our citizens and our businesses, which is needed in order for us to work together for the future of our great city. Again, thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Dr. Robinson.
Let me just begin by saying what an honor it is to be here and to serve on this council. And I thank all of those who have extended such a warm welcome to me. It's an honor to serve and I'm excited about these next four years. Mr. Hamilton and I had the opportunity to celebrate Veterans Day a little bit early today at Whitesburg School where they honored General Via and other vets. General Via was the guest speaker, but the students also did a remarkable job speaking and celebrated in music and honored our vets. And it was just a great way to begin the Veterans Day celebration. As General Via said in Huntsville, we don't do just one day. We do a whole week. And he got started a little bit early on it. I want to thank all the city department heads who have been meeting with me. They have been very generous with their time and inviting me into their departments. I have learned more about roads, ditches, and garbage than I probably ever wanted to know. But it has actually been very handy information because I've also been meeting with different neighborhood groups. And in those meetings, I've shared what I've learned. But probably the most important thing I've shared with them is the Huntsville Connect app and webpage. I've actually just run copies of the webpages that describe how it works and shared it with them. And I already got one email today from somebody that said, hey, I used it and it works and good job. And so, thank you to everybody who's responding to everything that's coming through that app. It's a tremendous resource for our citizens. And then finally, I'm looking forward to attending the National League of Cities Conference the week of November 17th. I'm looking forward to having some time with Mr. showers there. Unfortunately, it's going to be the same week as a city council meeting, so we won't be here that week. But I'm sure we'll come back much smarter. So, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Culver.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could just kind of chime off what you have already commented on, Dr. showers, about reliable towing. Just to digress for a minute, three years ago, I was chairing the Finance Committee and was at the helm of that. That particular company is a very impeccable company. They have, I had the opportunity to tour their facility. And they have, I forget how many acres, but they have the property enclosed. It's fenced in with barbed wire around the top. So, when they tow a vehicle, it is definitely secure and safe. And they definitely have all of the necessary equipment to handle whatever big load or small load that the city of Huntsville may have. And during that particular time, when we awarded that contract, I believe the competitors were not remotely close in terms of being able to handle the city's needs at that time. So, I'm impressed with Mr. Strong. And it's very appropriate that the city of Huntsville continues to include businesses like Mr. Strong as well as other minority-owned businesses in all of our endeavors. Because after all, you know, the monies that we use are taxpayers' money. And everybody who lives in Huntsville, you know, pays those taxes. So, good job and thank you very much.
Ms. Kling.
Mr. President, I was just looking at the board appointment totals that we'd had from a few minutes ago. There's a vacancy due to the resignation of Sarah Pauline Friscese. She serves on the Massach County Department of Human Resources Board, Place 7. And she has one year remaining in her term and she's resigned. So, in her place, I would like to nominate Patricia Morari. And I'll give biographical information to the council members between now and the next meeting.
Mr. President, I have nominated Dr. Ali Conley to serve on the Historic Preservation Board.
Is that a reappointment or is that a new appointment?
It comes under the delinquent members who have not been serving.
Okay.
And I pull that from that particular category in that that is a position that have not been attended by the person that was in that position. So, I'm nominating Dr. Ali Conley for a six-year term on that commission.
Thank you, sir. Came to my attention earlier that Ms. Reed is not here and I'm real concerned about her. I don't know if there's something bad has happened or if we didn't do a good job announcing that we had gone to the holiday schedule. School board meeting, maybe she's there, which is unusual for her to miss our meeting. But so, I'll be thinking about her and if I can find out any information at the end of the night, I'll share it with the council members.
Mr. President, could we let the record show that by a three to two vote, the city council expresses its concern that Ms. Reed's not here?
No, it's 5-0. We know everybody's here. Now at 13 unfinished business items for action. 13A is Resolution Number 14-851, authorizing mayor to enter agreement with the low bidders, meaning specifications outline the attached summary of bids for acceptance. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Robinson. Discussion. Dr. showers, did you want to discuss it?
President, I would ask my council members to give me the opportunity to get one last piece of information. As I mentioned in my remarks earlier, to validate that all three vendors that were listed, that they all have the appropriate insurance and that they have workman's compensation. At this time, I would move to postpone this item to the next council meeting, regular council meeting.
I would second that, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a motion by Dr. showers to postpone this next regular council meeting, seconded by Mr. Culver. Discussion as to the date. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. President, I need to ask you a question. There's one item included in this that accidentally got postponed from the last meeting that the council really needs to act on. It was a bid unrelated to towing. It's for training services. And so, we would ask that you adopt the item, but amend the towing portion out of it to be, however you do that procedurally. But we do need to approve one of those items that's in.
Okay, okay. Dr. showers, if you could just withdraw your motion for me and let's figure this out.
Okay.
We're back on the main motion on the floor. Mr. Taylor, so which item would you like to the council to consider tonight? Do you just want us to pull the towing out?
Yes, there's only two items. The first item is for training services for water pollution control. And we would ask that you just adopt the item, but amend it to remove the towing.
The chair moves to amend 13A by removing the award of the towing service.
Second.
Second by Dr. showers. Discussion on amendment. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. So, now we're voting on the main motion, which is to award a contract to American Train Co. LLC for onsite PLC and pump training. Further discussion?
Is that the same towing?
No, sir.
We move to another item?
No, we have two items on the bids. One is the record services and one is onsite PLC and pump training. And so, we're voting right now on awarding the contract for onsite PLC and pump training. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mr. Hager, do you want a motion just to postpone the record service or is that carried by the first? Okay, we'll bring it up in the next meeting. Council members, is it?
Thank you.
There's no business items for introduction. We're now at 15 new business items for consideration or action. Are there any items you'd like to hold?
Mr. President, I would like to hold items I, T, and X.
Okay, and I'd like to hold S and U. So, right now, we have I, S, T, U, and X. Are there any other items you'd like to hold? Hearing on 15A is a resolution authorized mayor to cost reimbursement agreement between the city of Huntsville and Northeast Alabama Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $157,625 for traffic enforcement duties. B is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one regular full-time recreation aid position. C is a resolution authorized mayor to license agreement between the city of Huntsville and the museum board of the city of Huntsville. D is a request to advertise and fill one landscape maintenance worker position. E is an ordinance declaring certain equipment a surplus to be sold at public auction. F is a resolution authorized clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank Letter Credit Number 362000832393 for Coventry Phase 2 at McMullen Cove Subdivision. G is a resolution authorized clerk treasurer invoke Bancorp South Bank Letter Credit Number 367000581608 for Little Mountain Subdivision. H is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one attorney-free position at higher than minimum if necessary. J is a resolution authorizing acceptance of donations. K is ordinance to amend budget ordinance Number 14-665 by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. L is ordinance to amend budget ordinance Number 14-665 by changing the appropriate funds for various, funding for various departments and funds. M is a resolution authorized mayor in agreement with the low bidders, meaning specifications outline attached summary of bids for acceptance. N is a resolution authorized mayor to execute agreement between the city of Huntsville Doing Business as the Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Alabama Department of Public Health. O is a resolution authorized mayor to execute agreement between the city of Huntsville Doing Business as the Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency. P is a resolution authorized mayor to exclude, to execute an agreement between the city of Huntsville Doing Business as the Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Alabama Law Enforcement Agency. Q is a resolution authorized mayor to contract between the city of Huntsville and Habitat for Humanity of Madison County for the use of $89,378 in CHDO home funds for the construction of a new home. R is a resolution to enter an agreement between the city of Huntsville and the Care Assurance System aged and Homebound Inc. for weatherization installation of grab bars. V is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one benefits technician position at higher than minimum if necessary. W is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one plan or two position at higher than minimum if necessary. Y is a resolution authorized modification Number 1 to the lease agreement between DSCSC LLC and the city of Huntsville, Alabama for lease of the property located at 2227 Drake Avenue, Suites 27, Huntsville, Alabama 35805, as approved by Resolution Number 14-210 on March 13, 2014. Chair moves for consolidation approval of 15A through H, 15J through R, 15V, W, and Y. Most statements, call it consolidated approval by the chair. Second by Dr. showers. Mr. Kling.
For the record, I'm gonna vote for the consolidation, but I'd like my vote for item 15W to be recorded as abstaining.
Well, then, we'll need to hold 15W out? Okay, so the motion to consolidate approval is 15A through H, 15J through R, 15V, and 15Y. Dr. showers, do you second that?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, consolidation approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. 15I is a resolution authorized mayor to enter agreement between the city of Huntsville and Standard Association Inc. to develop and administer the written examination of the position of fire captain. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Chief McFarland, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is, this is a routine test that we've been given for several years. We've exhausted everyone that was on the roster of our previous exam. And we need to promote some captains. It's the same test we've been given. We just have to have a contract to give the test.
Council members, does that answer your questions? Further discussion?
The, you say this is done annually?
Not necessarily annually, Dr. showers. Normally, we would thank you annually, but we've actually had a number of personnel that was available to be promoted to captain. We've already promoted those. We don't have anyone left that we can promote and we have some openings coming up. So, we're trying to get ready for those openings.
How many openings are there?
Right now, I don't have any openings now. We're running level now. What I'm projecting some is we get ready to open Station 19 and some other people that are retiring after the first two years. that are retiring after the first two years, but they haven't given me a definite number yet.
All right. Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. S is a resolution authorized mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the low bidder Hardiman Remediation Services, Inc. for asbestos abatement at former Holiday Insight, project number sixty-five fifteen SP zero one.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Martin, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is to award to the low bidder Hardiman Remediation Services for the removal and proper disposal of asbestos materials in the former Holiday Insight. That contract value is two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and there's a sixty calendar day timeframe for that work to be completed.
And why is the City of Huntsville doing it and not the developer?
It's part of the development package that we've provided to the developer.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Yes. Ms. Martin, do we know tonight who is going to assume the responsibility, who is the developer that's going to do this?
To develop the site?
Not, I don't mean the person that's gonna get the asbestos out, but have we identified who out there is gonna utilize that space?
Councilman Showers, are you asking for the developer or the tenants that will be onsite?
Tenants.
No, that is forthcoming. We will be bringing the council development agreement before the end of the year for you to consider for the development of the Holiday Insight, and hopefully, at that such time, we will have some tenants that the developer will be willing to announce. They are working with some as we speak, but can't come public.
Okay. While you're there, Mr. Davis, can you tell us the future of the Aquatic Center and the Scruggs Street Recreation Center as it relates to that particular project?
I will let Mr. Hamilton, since he handles park and recreation for that, he has a plan for that that he and his Parks and Rec departments is following through with.
Dr. Showers, the Aquatic Center, the replacement for the therapeutic pool that is currently at the Williams Aquatic Center is due to be replaced, and so the capital plan that council approved just a few weeks ago includes the funds required to build a new therapeutic pool. We know that the one that, the pool that's there now was not designed to do that. We've already begun meeting with user groups to identify the needs that the population needs. I personally met with three different groups this last Wednesday to begin discussing with them what their vision would be for the future, and how that fits with the current plans for replacement of therapeutic pool. So that design process would start here in the next few months. Construction is funded FY sixteen in the capital plan, and the site where that is located would be included as an option in the development agreement for the Holiday Inn, so it's not in the base, the base initial, it's not in the initial development of the Holiday Inn site, but it's there as an option for the developer, which also obligates, before that could occur, that we've properly replaced those facilities, which obviously can't occur until we've built the new ones, so.
Does that include Scruggs Street?
It does, Dr. Showers.
And as we speak tonight, do we have any prospect locations for those sites?
The pool would be part of the campus at the, co-located with the current auditorium on Drake across from the senior center. It allows us to do a couple of things. One, that would essentially become an aquatics campus with multiple pools, is what we envision. So in addition to the competition pools, there would also be the therapeutic pool as a separate but connected facility. So, you know, that pool predominantly supports elderly and handicap members of our community, and so it would be a separate space and a pool designed specifically for their needs, but co-located with the other pools to allow more efficient management of the overall aquatics program there. And the uses right now for Scruggs, it does not currently have any of our rec leagues assigned to it, and Coach Patterson and Steve Ivy and I are working through where we pick up additional capacity to meet the needs of the youth sports, which are the predominant users of Scruggs. Though it's pretty limited, there is still some use of it, and so we know that we've got to meet that need, and there are some potential opportunities for that. We still have to work through that and then present that to council, but the Aquatic Center would be co-located with an auditorium there on Drake.
Let me ask tonight that the site of the abandoned, dilapidated Council High School site, if you all could consider that as one of the sites possibly for Scruggs Street. We have put in our capital plan some money for that particular site, and I think that will certainly be an ideal site to move Scruggs Streets on that property if we could get it prepared. And I guess I need to be talking to Mr. Davis about that. I certainly would hope that as you look at sites, that would be a great opportunity to address the concerns that we have with the old Council High School, to put Scruggs Street Recreation Center on that site, if that's possible.
Dr. Showers, John and I both alone, may I, but we'll look into that and report back to you.
Thank you so much.
Certainly is a possible location.
Thank you.
And Dr. Showers, to follow up, so last week, you and I had a great conversation about some of the potentials there, and, you know, I left with the task of setting up a meeting with Mr. Lundey and the president of the alumni association, and so they are working to find a time we can all get together and talk about some of the opportunities, some of their ideas for that site as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Further discussion on fifteen S. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fifteen T is a resolution authorized mayor into agreement between the City of Huntsville and the low bidder Wiregrass Construction Company, Inc. for downtown Gateway Harvard Road Extension rebid. Option number two, option number three, option number four, option number five, option number seven, option number eight, and option number nine, project number sixty-five eleven RD zero three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Culver. Ms. Martin, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. Previously, the council had awarded on August fourteenth the base bid, which included the demolition of the buildings on site, some grading, and some utility relocations. We had bid this project with multiple options based on the funding that was allocated back in FY fourteen, so now that fifteen has been approved, we have asked, we're asking the council to move forward with awarding the actual roadway construction and the streetscape and sidewalks, as well as the connection towards Davis Circle that was originally bid.
Thank you. Questions, discussion?
Yeah. Ms. Martin, could you give us a visual sketch of where, just exactly where this is?
Yes, sir. I can email you a visual sketch, but it starts over there on Governor's Drive where Harvard intersects Governor's right now, and it will be a four-lane divided roadway with sidewalks and streetscapes and bike lanes on both sides of the road, and it extends across the ditch that's there now, Fagan Creek, and it merges with Low Avenue and ties into Williams Avenue adjacent to the Holiday Insight.
Thank you so much. Could you send the council copies of that sketch where it is?
Yes, sir. I can do that.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Kling.
I understand where the location is. Just generally, we could say it's to the east of First Baptist Church by a couple hundred feet, just for where it's going and everything. Do you have a ballpark estimate as far as when the road will be opened up, or when the whole project would be completed, you know, counting all the, all the different options and everything, just ballpark?
Yes, sir. We're anticipating completion date of early two thousand and sixteen.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. U is a resolution authorized to city council amend the contract between the City of Huntsville and Reed Contracting Services, Inc. for Barton Road on Redstone Arsenal base bid in option number one, option number two, option number three, project number sixty-five ten RD zero-nine by change order number three. Chair moves for approval?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Martin, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. This is a change order with Reed Contracting for Martin Road on Redstone Arsenal due to overruns in the bid quantities for the dense aggregate base course, as well as some utility conflicts that were encountered during construction.
And what was the amount of the cost overrun, and can you go over exactly why you had to go over?
Yes, sir. The majority of the overruns was associated with the dense graded base quantity. It was a misinterpretation in the bids. The typical section called out for a ten-inch thickness of base, and the bidders and the documents only specified a five-inch thick base course, and so basically, that quantity had to be doubled, and so the entire change order amount is four-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and twenty cents.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. W is a request for authorization to advertise and fill one plan or two position at higher than minimum if necessary. Mr. Kling has notified the chair he wishes just to recuse himself from this issue and abstain from voting. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries with Mr. Kling abstaining. X is a resolution authorized mayor to an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the state of Alabama regarding the Alabama Transportation Rehabilitation Improvement Program project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Showers, second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Davis, could you explain this, please?
Council members, this is our contract to enter into with ALDOT for our match money for Zert Road A-trip project. The project is ready to bid by the Alabama Department of Transportation. It's for the northbound lanes only. Our matching amount is one million three hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. With your approval tonight of this, ALDOT will hopefully let this project in this month's letting of November.
And Mr. Davis, my question is, why is the city responsible for a hundred percent of the cost overruns, if there are any?
That's the way the A-trip program was set up throughout the state. You submitted your estimate, and it was eighty-twenty match on A-trip funding. Any overruns is the city, because the state had a limited amount to disperse statewide, so any cost overruns, they didn't have a cushion there, so anyone who received A-trip funds had this same agreement.
Okay, and so we're pretty sure that we got the numbers right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
Yes. Does Madison, are they included in this particular fund?
They will be on the, there's still, both intersections, both at Madison Boulevard, I-565, and the Martin Road, plus the southbound lanes that has the Greenway and the other half of the Zert Road project, they do have five percent of the twenty percent match that's required on that project.
Okay. Are there other funds in addition to this project that the state has funded out of these funds?
Yes, you know, we have a couple other A-trip projects, the bridge that was downtown, and then Martin Road has a small section of A-trip funding that will be coming to you sometime in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. Out of those funds, and I'll be finished. What other projects does Madison enjoy from these funds?
As far as their A-trip projects, sir?
Yes.
I have a list, but I can't recall them off the top of my head. I know that they did County Line Road, they've got a section of US seventy-two, and then a Kellner Road project, but I think they did a couple of bridge projects, but I've got an entire A-trip list for Madison County. I could email you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have one legal department item transaction. We have deeds for acceptance right away for Remington Arms Company LLC. This was acquired ten-fourteen, two thousand and fourteen. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're now at non-roster communications from the public. Would anybody like to address the council at this time? Pastor Johnson.
TC Johnson, eighteen hundred Sparkman Drive. Now, ask the question, I want to ask it again. I'm asking on Article thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, respectively, dealing with gas, water, and I've asked our board for information under the Freedom of Information Act. I've not heard a thing. I'm asking, is my next step my city council and mayor, or do I have to seek help from the Attorney General on the information that I'm asking for? Also, laid out a case before you that I, as a citizen, think is unfair, and I don't know how we're going to discuss that publicly otherwise, but I can send you a whole list of stuff that I've come to understand and share it with our board. I want to read the first passage on all three of these boards for what they say about the power of the board. The board should have complete control of the municipal gas, water, the other one, system in a municipality, and shall have authority to employ upon terms to be fixed by the board, but in no event for a term exceeding one year and to discharge, that means Mr. Stowe's job is voted on every year, with or without cause, managers, cashiers, clerks, attorneys, and on and on and on. Our board is an important and powerful board. It runs our utility for the citizens, and my question is, if I can't get information under the Freedom of Information Act from them, and they continue to stall, because that's what this is about, do I seek it through my council and mayor, or do I seek it through the Attorney General? And I'd like to have that question answered, if you can.
Yeah, I can't answer it tonight. You're welcome to send us the question of what information you want, and we can talk to the utility company and see why they haven't provided, or if they can provide it.
You'll do that.
I'll be glad to ask, yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. President, excuse me. We have our attorney here tonight. Ms. Kate, are you at the to answer Mr. Dr. Johnson's question?
Well, offhand, they're a separate legal entity, and their information is not in the possession of the council members, so I don't know that the council members can actually demand that they turn over their information on their employees and the information that you seek. I have not talked with their attorneys. I don't know the status of your request under the Alabama Public Records Act. We could certainly inquire, but I think that's about all we can do.
Yeah, that's what we promised, is to ask.
Okay, all right.
So anybody else from the public wish to address the council? Sir, if you'll go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please. Barely. If you can speak loudly into the microphone, it would help us.
Can you hear me?
Barely, yeah.
My name is Butler, James Butler, and my son practiced law here for five years back in the nineties, and something happened where he lost his law license, and they, he went to work at my wife's bail bond company, and he was not a part of it, and so there was a week-long trial in two thousand and nine, and they kept me locked up in the jail throughout the trial, so that I couldn't influence anybody, influence the jury, or anything like that. And so I printed up for your information, this is not part of a lawsuit or anything like that, this is FYI, and I want to leave a copy of it with each member of the council, because we did municipal bonds as well as the state bonds, and you'll notice that what was at issue is contained on sheet three, and it's the conversion of a percentage to That was what the trial was about. That was the big issue, and so if, if you convert three point five percent to a decimal, you get a three-place decimal, point zero three five. That's read. percent to a decimal, you get a three-place decimal, point zero three five. That's read as a thirty-five thousandths. Point zero three five is thirty-five thousandths.
Sir, your time's up. Do you need more time to address the council, or you just want to leave their information?
I'm gonna leave this.
Okay.
But I, I knew I wouldn't be able to say anything in three minutes, and it's okay. I just want to leave these, and I'll come back on the twentieth, and everybody will have a chance to have seen this, and then I can, because see, this will grow. This, it won't be the same subject about us, my son and I, but it will be about other problems that the community is aware of, but nothing's done about them.
Sir, if you'll give us your address for the record, please.
Seventy-two oh five Whitesburg Drive, Huntsville, Alabama, three-five-eight oh two.
Thank you. And Ms. Stamper, if you'll get the documents. Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. President.
Mr. Culver.
And Mr. Butler, Will Culver here. I just want to say to you that every time I see you, my heart bleeds for you. As you know, I've worked very closely with your late son, your late daughter, and your late wife.
Yeah.
And your family, in my opinion, has been impeccable, and just want you to know that we share your loss, your losses. Okay?
When you read this, you'll be astounded.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to address the council? Okay, we're moving on. The council has business. We need to elect a member to serve on the City of Huntsville Planning Commission. Is, are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Robinson.
Dr. Robinson has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? The chair moves nominations to be closed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kling. All those in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we'll just vote on Dr. Robinson. All those in favor of Dr. Robinson, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Dr. Robinson has been appointed to the Planning Commission. A member of the council should be elected by the council to serve as a representative to the Research Park Board. Are there nominations?
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling.
I'd like to nominate the Honorable Will Culver.
Mr. Culver has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? The chair moves to close nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Showers. All those in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's just vote on Mr. Culver. All those in favor of Mr. Culver signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Culver has been appointed to the Research Park Board. A member of the council should be elected by the council to serve as representative of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Mr. President?
I nominate Councilman Mark Russell.
Second, and move that nominations be closed.
Council members, thirteen years, and you're still gonna do this, but I'll accept it.
No, you've done a, you've done a very good job.
You just like seeing my name in the paper when those issues come up. All those in favor of appointing the chair to the Historic Preservation Commission Board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. I'll make the following appointments. The top of the Alabama Regional Council of Governments, TARCOG, Dr. Richard Showers, Senior, Mr. Bill Kling, Community Actions Agency of Huntsville, Madison, and Limestone County, Inc., Mr. Will Culver, Huntsville, Madison County, Kling Community Systems, Dr. Jenny Robinson, the Advisory Commission on Accessibility. The chair appoints Frank Heffel. The City of Huntsville Insurance Count Committee, Richard Showers, Senior, and Mr. Bill Kling. Chair of the Finance Committee, Dr. Richard Showers, Senior, and Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, Mr. Kling. Is there any other business that needs to come before the city council?
Move to adjourn.
We're adjourned.